Call the meeting to order. Call the meeting to order of the, of a council work session to discuss city boards and commissions. Roll call, please.
Member Crossley.
Here.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Shaun's here.
He's present. I see him. Mayor Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Pardini.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg, quorum is present.
Okay, the purpose of the work session tonight is to discuss the, our boards and commissions, the fact that there is not a whole lot of guidance that's offered through either the city charter or through the code of ordinances. So there's a number of topics that we want to discuss. Everyone, I assume, received my list of seventeen items that we need to address. Did anyone have any, any items that they wanted to add to, to the list? Okay, well then, we should probably just follow that, that list and the, the first item is the number of members on each board. The stated number of, of members on each board is, you know, as, I don't remember who pointed it out, but on the, on our city website, we have, for instance, I, I believe the park board has nine members. And the, the information that we have indicates that there's, there aren't that many. So I think the idea is that, does anyone have any problem with the, the number of members that are currently on the boards? Okay, so. Yes? Okay.
So we're just proposing to keep it, I just want to confirm, we want to propose to keep it the same way it is outlined in, like, Article seven of that part of the charter? Like.
I, I'm assuming that we're going to be addressing these, these changes, these clarifications through an ordinance. I, I would assume that it, it would be cumbersome to try and change the charter, you know, in order to accomplish that. So we're looking at in ordinance that will establish and delineate these types of, of issues.
Can I, can I just say something real quick about that? So it seems like each of the board ordinances would benefit from being update to be consistent with each because the problem is, what I noted when I went through is that, like, they use, they use different terms to refer to the same thing. So there's this lack of consistency among them and even noted that, like, some say they're, the per, the board members are to be appointed by cap, council. Some say appointed by mayor, approval by council. So it seems like almost we have to go through each one and clarify stuff. I don't know what.
I, I think, you know, those particular issues you're talking about are, are commonalities that should be consistent through, you know, all the boards and commissions. So yes, we have to be consistent and clarify how we're going to go about, you know, the, the nomination process, which is item number five. With regards to the number of members on each board, one thing that I didn't put on here is that we've mentioned in the past that there's possibility of having alternative members, alternate members, I should say. And there's advantages and disadvantages to that. The, the advantage would be that if not all the board or commission members can attend a meeting, then the alternate would, would be available to provide additional input. It also, you know, another advantage would be that they would have an, an opportunity to to somewhat participate in, in board procedures, in commission procedures prior to, you know, ascending to a full-time member. You know, some, yeah, and Anthony might be able to answer this. Sometimes we, we do have a problem with having a quorum for some of the boards and commissions. And so we want to eliminate that problem. Has that occurred with any regularity in the, in the recent past?
Not in the recent past, no. It did
Okay.
any years ago, but not in the recent past.
And I think that's somewhat predicated on the fact that we do have the boards and commissions filled. When we didn't, it was, it was, we, we weren't always sure that we would have enough, enough people to actually hold a meeting. So.
I mean, so I, I would hope that if somebody, you know, rather than asking somebody to serve on, as like a, a backup, I would just like to ask that our board members, like, commit to the, the process that they're involved in and that if, if they, there comes a time when they have a, a need to step away from that responsibility, that they can do that and then a position becomes open. I really liked when we briefly looked at the other cities forums that they use. One city said, had just kind of like a, a yes or no question, are you willing to attend meetings on a regular basis? I liked that question. We could include that on our application form.
Well, yeah. And we certainly can add that language. I think it's understood that everyone's, you know, going to attempt to attend, you know, every meeting, but you know, I'm not sure how you utilize that as a criteria. If they say that they're willing to and then they can't make it. You know, but, you know, as I said, that, you know, there's not as much of a need. There was a time when we were having a hard time getting a quorum, you know, for some of the meetings and it made sense to have someone else that would, that could step in when necessary, but does anyone feel that there is necessary to even, it's necessary to even discuss alternates at this point?
Didn't we just approve use of alternates for one of them? I remember having this conversation not that long ago.
Well.
I can answer that if that, if that helps Mayor Greenberg. That would be the Board of Adjustment. And that's the only board I see you really need alternates for. Being is, it's only a five-member board. You need four positive or affirmative votes for variants to be approved. Oh, if, if one person can't make it, essentially the applicant cannot have one no vote or they won't see, they won't get their approval. So we, we do need an alternate for that, those two, that board only that I can think of. We will like, we always like to make sure we have a full five-person board for somebody seeking a variance. That's the only one I could think of. And I believe that's, Councilmember Phillips is recalling.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, I think that we could, we could have language in there that allows for alternates under certain circumstances. And that might be a decision that we leave up to the.
I always just wondered what constitutes a quorum.
I, I, I didn't hear what you asked. Were you asking, Councilmember Wood?
I was, but I think I'm cutting out and then I.
I heard you Karen. She asked what constitutes a quorum.
Right, what constitutes a quorum?
And the only one of them indicates specifically a number. Other than that, it would just be a majority, wouldn't it?
I thought it was fifty percent plus one.
Four of them.
It's a board of five, is it not three?
So it would be the majority. So four out of seven, five out of nine.
But three out of five?
The Board of Adjustment is unique and then you need four affirmative votes. And again, that's a separate board, unique if it's, for example, if it's turned down, the council can't write it.
But that's the one that I think specifically. And it's, it says that in the ordinance, I think.
I think we lost you for a second.
I lost you.
There. I think, and I think that one says it in the ordinance. So.
So, yeah, I think the fact matters. We need to define exactly what a quorum is for, for all the boards and commissions if, if it's inconsistent or if it's not clear. And I'm assuming that there's no need to change the, the quorum requirement. So what we're saying is that fifty percent plus one is, is that how we want to word it?
I mean, I thought that's how, I don't know, I thought that's just the definition. Like, I learned that in new elected official training and unless there's some sort of state law that governs particular things or we have another ordinance, but that's what I learned at new.
It's a simple.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to get the language right. And we'll have the city attorney review this also to make sure that we're in compliance with applicable laws. So that's item number one. Any more discussion on the number of, of members in alternates and quorum? Okay, item number two is residency requirements for membership. Currently, Anthony, which, which boards have members that aren't, I know SPD and Designer Review Board have, allow and require to have members that aren't necessarily residents, but, but have businesses within the licensed businesses within the city.
Can I ask a question about design and review? So it says that have at least three members who are residents. Don't, there also have to be three members that are business owners. So one has to be both?
Yeah, that's.
So. I mean, I guess what happens if you can't find someone to meet both? Or is that limiting in a way?
We've been able to do that in the past. The seven years I was on it, I was both a business owner and a, a resident. So you know, we, you know, I, we could keep that in there or make an emergency provision, you know, until a person can be found, you know, that, that meets that criteria. You know, however you guys want to do it, you know, you know, the idea is that we, you know, the, the Designer Review Board and Historic Preservation Commission, which are essentially the same, we're, you know, we've never had a requirement that we have design professionals on that. I wouldn't mind actually doing that, but I think that would be limiting. But as far as having business owners, that's, that's in many ways how we get our design professionals. Because they're, they're business people. They're either architects or interior designers or that, that work within the city. And that gives us more latitude to solicit, you know.
And I don't have a problem with that. Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with it. And I'm just wondering if, you know, you could run into problems where one has to meet both. That was all I was pointing out.
I, I, I don't remember the last time where, where we had that issue, but you know, if anyone wants to address that, you know, by, you know, by requiring two businesses, you know, two members to be business owners and three to be residents. Because if someone is a business owner and a resident, then they, they meet that qualification too. It's just, we don't have three business representatives, you know, at that point. You know, there's possibility of having three business, two business and, and three residents. Or we can deal with it in the selection process too.
I feel like this sort of, I would maybe want to come back to this question about designer review seems possibly the most complicated because it's the smallest board and has the highest number, like, requirements for both residents and business members. I would kind of maybe want to come back to that nuanced question later. I just want to point out also Sustainability Commission has five residents and two business people who work in the city.
Okay. You know, and those determinations were made when these boards were formed. And, you know, we do have an opportunity to revisit those. You know, I, I certainly feel that the, the, on, on design review and sustainability, that the input from members of the business community is, is important. So.
So, so to address.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
I just, I just, I believe Jenny's concern is finding a resident. It's not hard to find a business. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it might be hard in the future to find a resident who also owns the business. And that could be simply, we could amend that. And, and I see what you're saying. We've been lucky in the past, but you're saying, hey, that could be a problem. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, yes.
I, I, I agree with that. That, I mean, we could easily make that change if, if, if the council is that we can modify that ordinance. And there was just, there was just a, a listserv email out about, you know, what, what, what cities require in, um, design and review boards. A lot of them do require design professionals, but I think that makes it even more difficult sometimes to find somebody. And this board is, is the one that works the most, meets the most. Um, it's a, it's a tough board to be on. So I don't disagree. That's a, that, that could be a problem in the future. Um, they meet every month for hours at a time. So if the council wants us to change that, we can draft legislation. We can put that in as part of the overall amendment.
Could we say two residents, two business owners and one resident or business owners, that you have some flexibility? You know, maybe that.
You know, preferred
Right.
slash resident, but either or would be fine.
Yeah.
In the decision process.
Would we be okay then with three business owners and two residents?
Not really.
Not really.
Well, that's, that's, that's why that, that doesn't necessarily work well.
Yeah.
Well.
If you make it flexible enough that you can do what you want, then you can, you know, always.
Within the selection process.
Yeah. I mean, because the fact remains, if you can't find, I mean, if all you can find is, is a business person, then right, you'll have your five.
Yeah, I just make it discretionary.
Yeah.
That last person on there, that's fine. I mean, I'm, I'm good with that. I just was expressing that I'd much rather have more residents and businesses, but
Me too.
It doesn't have to be. Yeah, we have good businesses.
Yeah, I'm, I, not that I want to beat it to death, but you know, there, there are major advantages to having a design professional on Designer Review Board. And as you said a second ago, that can be addressed in the selection process. But I've been in, in meetings where no one really understood what, you know, the drawings and the, the type of information that they receive is not always readily understood by, by a layperson. And so, you know, I would personally give preference to someone that had a design background, but but that doesn't need to be codified in the, in the ordinance. So.
I have a general question about how we define a resident. Do we have age limits or occupancy requirements? Anything like that specified?
You need to have an occupancy permit. That's it.
Okay.
And it would maybe be helpful to, that's what I was saying earlier, is that each ordinance contains, like, some say resident, some say citizen and resident, some say freeholder, one says freeholder. So that's the kind of stuff that would be helpful to clean up. So like, to get to Sarah's point and it's clear who is eligible for that board.
We'll just go through and make them a resident and leave it at that. I, I, again, that was probably just done at different times. When I was looking through the park board stuff that Eleanor, for their email, I saw they were talking about digging in the beach. I don't know if anyone caught that. But as, as those ordinances are passed at different times. So we'll throw that up. That's a good catch. Thank you.
And I mean, I would.
Language, can we just also make a point to review any pronouns?
Yes.
I, and I would rather, I mean, I personally would rather amend each section of our ordinances that deals with boards or commissions, rather than adding like a new ordinance that like makes all these changes. Because right now we have section that's in our charter. We have, then we have all the sections that are in the codes of ordinances. And so as a, as a resident or citizen to, to navigate all of that already, it would be less, I think, feel like less transparent, less open if we like add a new section. It's like, oh yeah, you have to know that this one also overrides all of this stuff. I'd rather amend it throughout if we can.
And I would imagine that would be the approach that was taken if we are trying to make them consistent with each other. Yeah.
I'll, I'll speak with the city attorney on it, but to amend the charter requires a vote of the people. So that, that may be why they did the ordinances, the ordinance in the past. I'll double check with the city attorney.
Yeah, the only real thing, I mean, the number of members is in the charter. Like, it's very little that's actually in the charter. But so most of it can be done by amending the ordinances. I'm just saying I'd rather amend them than to add a, a new one.
Whatever comes out of this meeting and any subsequent meetings, staff will put together draft, a draft ordinance for everyone to review before we go in there. We'll make sure everyone's comfortable. And I'll send it out for review. You know, early, maybe a part of a city manager report or something. We'll, we'll get everything you guys want in there. The only question I have is on that charter. Um, we just did an amendment, I don't know, maybe six years ago. I don't, I can't think of the last one, maybe four years ago. You know, make a note if we ever do another one, we'll, we'll clean that up, but probably not worth it for something just to change two members on the planning commission right now. Or the park board, I believe you said had nine. We're using seven.
Okay, the as far as the term of service, I noticed that that is somewhat synonymous with item number ten with, which is length of, of terms. So let, let's avoid that one for right now and pick it up as number ten. Recruitment process. I know that there's a, a desire on the, you know, of the entire council to to make sure that people are aware of vacancies and also aware of the process to apply for, you know, for a position on a board. And recommendations have been made to put it on social media. So is there anything that we're not doing right now that needs to be done?
Anthony, do you know when you and Laura will have the draft of the form for review?
I have Laura on the meeting right now. Laura, do you have any updates?
Um, I mean, I can have this form ready once we've finalized all the questions.
I think last time we, we were gonna, Anthony came to us with like three proposed questions and we added a few. I mean, how do you want to do that? Because there were, we, you know, we sort of wanted to pull a few in from some of the other examples.
Well, we, uh, we're not quite there yet in terms of the, the agenda. It's coming up real soon. You know, the, the main thing that I want to talk about now is what do we want to do to increase our chances of getting qualified candidates for, for boards and commissions?
I mean, are you talking advertising as opposed to substance?
In terms of recruiting, yes. It, it would be advertising for.
So I think the, the form, I mean, creating that is, and then directing people to it using social media, using the email listserv, putting it in the Maple Leaf. I mean, doing all the things that we would normally inform the city of, you know, the residents, stuff going on.
Okay, so I, I know that we were planning to do that based on our conversation with last conversation with Laura. I don't know to what extent it's been implemented, but so, you know, the, I'm assuming so it would be on the website. Facebook. I'm not sure exactly, you know, what other social media presence we have since I don't subscribe to, you know, to those, but so anywhere.
And she did, yeah, she did do it when we knew about an opening. The problem is it seems like there's been some openings that have come up that maybe we weren't aware about. So they weren't. So she didn't have an opportunity to put it out there. But I will know when we had the one, she got it out there and, I mean, we got responses, I thought, based off that.
Do, can I respond, Anthony?
Yes, please do.
So for the last one that we had was with the park board. And we posted it on social media. We posted it on the website. We did an email blast and then we also did a post on the bulletin board here at City Hall. And then depending on when the Maple Leaf goes out, if we have an opening, we can put it in the Maple Leaf. But moving forward with the Maple Leaf, we will always have a piece in there regarding boards and commissions.
Okay, is everyone satisfied with, with that?
I have a question. Do we have a sort of packet of information that we give new residents when they come to
get their occupancy permit?
You should. I think that's a great idea.
I'll have to ask Karen Scheid what she does. I know when I was city clerk, I had one. I'll, I'll find out. I'm assuming they still pan that out. Put that in there if that's what you're asking it. I'll ask the city clerk tomorrow and I know, I know I used to do one when I was city clerk. I'll find out.
Anthony, we did redo this last year, the welcome packet. And there is a page in there with elected officials. And it also lists all of the, all of the boards and commissions.
Okay.
When they meet. And then at the bottom, it does have a little blurb about if you're interested in serving. So it does get updated here.
Thanks.
Which, which leads me to the next issue, which is you know, as we're recruiting members for boards and commissions, sometimes I get potential members that may or may not, you know, they, they might want to serve on more than one board. Or, you know, they're not specific about which board, you know, they have a preference for. And so, you know, in those cases, I ask them what, what their first preference is and what their second preference is. And usually we don't have to get to the third preference, but the idea is that we do want to maintain a database of, of candidates and, you know, that we can refer to. We, you know, if they miss the, the announcements, but they still want to serve on a board, you know, I would much rather have them express their desire to serve on a board when they're thinking about it. We can always check back with them and we can have that, you know, database maintained by the city clerk. You know, so far.
Yeah, and that was something that was going to be in that form. So I think we had talked about you could, there were boxes where you selected which ones you were interested in and then a space to list that preference. So anytime, so anyone could access that form anytime from the website and so it would be in a centralized place was my understanding.
Okay. Okay, so we have a vacancy. We have people that that, you know, that want to serve on the board. In terms of the nomination process, I guess, you know, we, you know, does anyone that want to serve on a board automatically get nominated?
You mean if, what do you mean? If no one else?
Yeah, this has been a subjective issue in the past in that I've had board openings and I've had people apply for board positions and based on research that I, that I did, it, it wouldn't have been a good fit. So the idea is, you know, how do we go through the the nomination process before we get to the point where we're actually selecting someone?
So we, last time we talked about having the form, the results of the form would hopefully dump into a database, but then also go, it it would be, results of the form would go to each council member and like the city clerk or something, just as a file. So we will all, everybody who will see applications, we could some cities like discuss them at work sessions or council meetings, discuss applications.
Anthony, in your opinion, would it be, can we do this in closed session, sort of as a personnel matter?
I need to double check with the city attorney. I would have concerns about openly discussing an applicant.
Yeah.
Basically saying, hey, this extra guy, I really don't like him for this reason or for that reason, especially when you've got a lot of people watching these meetings. I don't know if people, I don't know if that's a good idea. I'll double check, we can double check with the attorney, city attorney Hassel tonight. I just that'd be the only reservation I had about that is, is, you know, openly being critical of people that are just trying to show an interest in being on a board or commission.
Yeah, I don't think we could have a, an open and objective conversation if if it was public. So.
I'm trying to avoid or circumvent a public process. I'm just, I'm just wondering if if that would, people would really want want that to happen, especially if they're just trying to show interest. I doubt any moment would be very critical. You can maybe just talk about which ones you like. We'll double check tonight with the attorney Hassel.
Okay. So as far as the selection process, then.
I don't know that we nailed down a nomination process. I think we talked about some issues related to that, and I don't know if we're ready to pick one, but I don't want to skip over it if we're not ready to move on.
Okay. So at this point, we've advertised for a position. And we have perhaps a database of people that, you know, that might have previously expressed interest in a position on a particular board. So at that point, you know, we need to probably have a discussion as a group, you know, with regards to, you know, the the qualifications and whether there's anything that would preclude us from wanting to, you know, have that person, you know, serve on the board or commission.
So are we saying we're looking at a set of like five applications for one position? We've advertised.
That's never been the case. We're, you know, it's it's usually the opposite, but I'm hoping that with this process, there'll be, there'll be enough applicants to to fill positions. But the idea is that once we have people that have expressed interest in a board or commission, whether in response to the recruitment or just because they've expressed previous interest and put their their name down with an interest in perhaps, you know, serving on, you know, that's one of the boards or commissions that they've indicated that they would like to serve on.
Can we clarify something real quick? So are we only talking about, so it seems like, are we only talking about a vacancy where whoever held the position no longer wants it? Because I feel like we also have the issue of openings, which where it is filled, but perhaps someone's been in that seat for a long time or what the process looks like for that? I mean, is it like, are we going to discuss that separately?
Yeah, that, yeah, that's item number 12.
Okay.
You know, on the agenda. I know they're all interrelated, so it's kind of hard to discuss one independently of all the other ones, but
All right.
So you know, I I just want to clarify, you know, so now that we have, let's say, an opening on a board or commission, we have a, we have, let's say, one person that previously, months ago, expressed interest to serve on that board. And we have two people that that have responded to the recruitment and they want to serve on the board. So, you know, where do we go from there is what I'm trying to figure out.
Does it make sense for each person to review the the material submitted and then share, you know, who they choose? I mean, I don't know. I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts, but.
And what about ranking them? Is that, you know, if we have three applicants and we did rank them and then tally? I don't know.
I think all of that would have to be public if it was considered, like, I'm a yay or a nay on this person, or I'm a meet, like, I'm a middle ground on this person. I'm do we know what other municipalities do? If it's anyone from the council can nominate as long as they have a second or anything like that?
I think it depends upon the board. Boards, most of ours are nominated by the mayor. So, you know, our selection process should be probably in a closed session. And I don't think ranking has to be a public process because you're not voting for anybody per se. And and then have the, you know, the mayor nominate the person that that we're going to elect into that position. I mean, it pretty, should be pretty straightforward because we'll have the nominations. And I'm assuming that no one's talked about a timeline for advertisement. It's going to be 30 days, two weeks? Don't know. Doesn't matter to me how long that process is, but at that end of that, yeah, and whatever that two weeks or 30 days process, sit down, look at the applicants, could be one, could be five, rank them, say if it's only one and everybody, you know, says, yeah, no, sounds good, then great. If it's five, you know, you just maybe in a closed session, we discuss it, rank it there, and then we can put that person as a nomination. I'm assuming that's going to be okay in a closed session because even they're volunteers, so to speak, even though they kind of have an official position and and, you know, I I don't, I wouldn't feel comfortable discussing anybody's resumes for a board in public. I have no problem with the process after it that we've nominated or discussing with people why we didn't pick a certain person, but certainly during that deliberative period, that probably needs to be behind, you know, behind a, or in a closed session rather, so.
Following up on what, you know, one thing you just said, Sean, you know, how long, you know, should the process take? You know, the advantage of having a longer period of time gives more people an opportunity to apply, which means that we would have to start the process earlier. So, you know, so when we talk about the end of the term and reenlist, reenlistment later on, you know, the, you know, I've been waiting until the term is expired to talk to people because there just hasn't been a whole lot of other applicants. And there's been no sense of urgency, you know, to do that. And because there haven't been other applicants, you know, you know, there's, there's no reason to kick someone off off a board in creative vacancy. You know, so.
I think I think part of this process should be the fact that when someone starts 30 days before their expiration, that their name gets put in that pool with anybody else that's interested in it. And it's up to the council to to decide, you know, what's fair, what's not fair, or who's the most qualified person is. And it could be the same person that has that seat, maybe they've done a great job, never missed a meeting, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, whatever your internal mechanism is, mechanism is to pick somebody. But they should, anybody even when their term expires, they definitely have to put their resume in the hat.
Okay, so are we thinking 30 days? You know, prior to the.
Yes, that's good.
Okay, so 30 days, you know, if someone's term expires June of this year, at the end of May, we need to advertise. And then we will, we'll either get candidates or we won't get candidates. Yeah, but yeah, as far as you said, Sean, the process makes sense that, you know, you analyze those candidates, the new candidates, and anyone that wants to reenlist.
Which gets to the point of that we don't really have a separate vacancy and opening, we just have openings, right? That's what I was trying to draw out before, just anytime any position is coming available, engage in the process.
Yeah, that, you know, I I believe that's, you know, the stated intent that was expressed previously. So and that does simplify, you know, the process. And so what I would be doing is in that 30 day, you know, period, I would probably still do what I've done before and contact the board member and ask them if they would, you know, like to continue on and let them know what the process is. So that that they're going to be, you know, considered, but we're also considering other, you know, members at the same time, that it's it's not a lock for them to stay on the board. In the past, if I if I have asked someone if they would like to stay on the board, then that was pretty much a promise that, you know, that they would, that they would continue to serve on the board. And what we're saying is that, you know, you know, it sounds like the best thing for me to do is contact them, let them know their term is expiring and are they interested? And if they're interested, then they will be considered to continue to to serve based on, you know, the number and qualifications of all the applicants being considered.
So just to clarify, a point of clarification, would they also need to submit that form so that they've answered the questions as well, so that we're looking at the same data for all the candidates? And it seems like, yeah, like someone, someone will need to be packing this out and sending those reminder emails. And then also, it seems like the website could lay the process out as well. So so people have a place to go to find the information as well.
Yeah, that's fine. You know, the, one of the other reasons that I contact, you know, someone with an expiring term is that, you know, I just want to personally thank them for serving on the board or commission. And, you know, they might have some insight too as to what's going on with the board, or, you know, whether it's their role or just the board in general, and give me some insight as to what type of things we should be looking for, what kind of issues we're experiencing. And then if I get that type of feedback, then I can share that in our closed session. So that makes sense to me to provide recognition, ask for feedback, and then, you know, then I can see, you know, let them know that, you know, they need to follow this process because in the past, there's been no real process. And so I just want to make sure if they want to continue to serve that that they know what they have to do. So that, yes, go ahead.
And can we just, I mean, yeah, hopefully we have a landing board for boards and commissions that describes like the process for for all of this clearly and has the application form. Can we just confirm, Anthony, you are going to ask John Hassel to confirm for us what parts of this, what parts of discussion would need to be, could be closed versus required to be open? I mean, understanding that we want to be sensitive about what whatever happens openly, but could you just clear, you're going to do that, Anthony? Okay, thank you. I mean, and that's sort of like, after applications have been received, like, how do we like decide and discuss to to come up with the nomination that we, you know, the person that we want to nominate that we vote on?
Yeah. Okay, so the the next item is number seven, removal from the board. There's, it's, I, I, there's only once that I can remember in the last few years where a board chair has asked that someone be removed from the board. And it's typically because a member hasn't attended the number of meetings. So, you know, even if they say that they're, you know, they're willing to sign something that says they they will attend, you know, every meeting that they can. You know, there needs to be a process for removal from the board. And I would assume that that, you know, coincides with, you know, the next two items are selection of board chair and responsibilities of board chair. Because I I don't know that the ordinances really address, you know, how that's done. And we probably should, you know, be consistent. Go ahead.
Some of them do address how a board chair is selected. So maybe we just find which one we're most comfortable with and choose that. But I do know that some, I think one, I made notes, but.
You mean, you mean removes, Jenny?
No, he also said appointing a chair, so.
The selection of a chair.
Just, I just wanted to note that before I farted on that one.
You know, it, you know, it's not rocket science to, you know, appoint a board chair. It obviously should be done by the members of the board, I would think. And so we just need to make sure that the process is consistent across all boards. You know, the number of votes required to, you know, to select, if, do.
And the length, the length of services chair is different in different ones, too.
Yeah. And so you know, you know, and then you have, you know, staggering terms too that you have to deal with when you're, you know, talking about, you know, a a board chair. And then the question is, is there a vice chair, you know, of each board that serves as chair when the when the the chair is not available? I would think that we would want to have a chair and a vice chair for each of the boards and commissions. And as far as the selection process, it's, you know, as I said, it should be pretty straightforward. It's something that, you know, the the board decides and whether it's a simple majority or, you know, whether it requires, you know, a super majority. I would assume right now that it's it's based on a simple majority of the ones that are are stipulated.
In my experience, it's based on whoever was willing to do it.
One person that didn't step back, yeah.
I do think one does say, though, that you cannot do it successively. So there's that to consider, too. I thought, I thought I saw that. Let me see. You guys keep, I'll see if I can find it.
Can I ask Anthony a question?
Yeah.
Is recording notes always the responsibility of the staff person? Or do some boards have like a recording secretary? Or.
Some boards, some boards have a recording secretary or or someone that takes notes. Park board is a good example. Park board members.
Because I, I mean, I I would kind of like to, I mean, I would kind of maybe like to have a a chair and then a recording secretary that can act as acting chair when the chair is not there, so that some of the notes are recorded by the members. There's like a record of notes recorded by the members of the of the board or commission.
Eleanor, can I ask why you'd have that preference versus having a staff member?
Because I think if it's not outlined, it can be variable as to. what happens with it. Like it can, and that there's like a possibly, I mean, I think there's an ownership of the responsibility for that when the board is participating in that themselves.
The board's always review the minutes and approve the minutes. So if there are any changes, they could always add or subtract language that they don't believe is reflective of the meeting. And just keep that in mind. Matter, it doesn't matter to me if I don't have to take minutes.
It doesn't matter to me who takes the minutes as long as they're indicative of what's taken, transpired at the meeting.
I would say this is something that maybe shouldn't be consistent across the boards. Because I think, you know, the, for instance, planning and zoning and board of adjustment, things like that probably should remain as a staff member because there are legal implications.
There's no question, Sandy's absolutely right about the planning commission.
They, well, and they might have state. I mean, don't they have some state staff who's that governs some stuff?
The board of adjustments actually done by, we actually have a, it's actually transcribed. We have to, we have to hire a transcriber to come in. Because if, for example, they're turned down, the only method of appeal is the circuit court of appeals. So we need that actual legal transcription for the board of adjustment. And that's why we do it that way. But I would agree with Councilmember Phillips about the planning commission. Because you end up getting in a lawsuit about a potential land use issue. You'd like to make sure you're not going to run into trouble with what's put, what's not. People, they can attend if they want.
Yeah, I will note though, the design and review board ordinance does say though, that the mayor appoints the chairperson, but the board members appoint a secretary. So not sure if that's.
There are other boards that do that.
Yeah, so maybe some of them could require, and not all of them.
I believe that's what Councilmember Phillips was alluding to, is that accurate?
Yeah.
Really, the only one that I'm really worried about would be exactly the one that Councilmember Phillips said, and that would be the planning commission. Because the board of adjustment would be the second, but that's already taken care of.
Okay. And then do we, are there any, I'm not sure very if it was like the next item, but kind of the roles of the chairperson? Like we talked a lot about like whether or not we have a vice chairman, but not a lot on like what the, like.
Next item, so, you know, the, you know, and that could change from board to board just because the boards operate so differently. But the idea is that you need someone to run the meeting. Unless Anthony, you know, the staff liaison, you know, does, you know, part of that. But the chair does the rest of it. So, you know.
Who works on setting the agenda? For, I know some of them have agendas set by other things that are happening, like permit requests and.
The staff liaison, as far as I know, is the one that establishes the agenda on all the boards and commissions.
It establishes the day-to-day agenda. But if a board or commission wants something on the agenda, all they need to do is ask and it'll be put on the agenda.
I think that there's been, that it would be, I think it would be effective to have the chair that a role is, is that like they play a role in setting the agenda. That's been a challenge on sustainability commission.
What's the challenge? I'm not following.
Well, I mean, when I was on it, we operated for a year and a half with no chair. There is lack of clarity on who set the agenda or how to move things forward or how to follow up on something that we had talked about, like at multiple meetings.
No, I think it's reasonable to have the staff liaison set the, establish the agenda with the review and assistance of the board chair. You know, obviously the whole board can't.
I mean, why do we want, I don't know. I guess I also just don't understand why you want, don't want your residents playing like an active role in.
I don't think he's saying that he doesn't want them to play an active role. Barry, you can chime in. But I think he's saying that I think the staff is going to have the, their finger on the pulse of what needs to be on the agenda. And then collaboratively with the chair is how the agenda would get set. I don't think it's an exclusive either or.
Yeah, in my experience, you know, for seven years on design and review board, you know, the chair didn't have anything to say about it. These were, you know, obviously applications that were made by applicants who are trying to, you know, who are trying to get a building permit. And so, you know, there was no role whatsoever. However, that doesn't mean that, you know, especially like on the sustainability board, that the agenda really needs to be set by the whole board. And that, to me, that should happen through the chair. Because, you know, we don't want the whole board trying to establish the agenda. So, you know, it's published by the staff liaison, you know, with the, you know, in some cases, input review and, you know, of the board chair.
The park board, the park board's a good example where, I mean, if I had to guess, the percentage of the set by the park board is probably 80% by the actual board members. But as Mayor Greenberg said, the design review is nearly 100% because it simply doesn't need approval or not. And that, that starts at staff. Commission is another one, very similar. It's basically a reaction to applications or requests from the public that do go through staff. So I know you've had that experience with sustainability. It was relatively in its infancy when you were on that board. And if there's a problem with that, we can review that with board members. They're also going to be coming to the city council if they feel as though their voice isn't being heard. That could be a time. And I would deal with a staff member if they're not, that, I consider that the flaw of the staff member that is not accurately putting the agenda together to reflect what the board or commission wants. I don't know if you need to necessarily create a different process. I think we just need to have discussions with whoever the staff liaison is for a particular board if it's not meeting the desires of that particular board.
Well, and can I note, it seems like sustainability is sort of like the odd duck because it's created by a resolution and not an ordinance. And so, and its mission is to recognize things and come up with ideas as opposed to reacting to, or, or, you know, interpreting existing law. And frankly, it says they're supposed to make recommendations to us. But since I've been on, I have never once received one. So maybe it's just revisiting.
But aren't, but so parks and sustainability are both like advisory boards, right? And BOA and Housing Board of, BOA and Planning and Zoning are different. Like they have.
Planning and zoning and design review board or advisory, they don't make the decisions themselves. They come up with, they, they give us the results of their, of their analysis. And we make.
And they also have some like additional state level laws of things that they're supposed to do, right? Governing.
Yes, that's accurate.
Planning and zoning, yes.
Yeah, so anyway, it was just a, I just, I mean, I liked how Sandy, Councilmember Phillips phrased it, that I think it would be useful to, for the boards where it's relevant to clarify that the agenda is collaboratively set with the staff liaison and the chair. And I, I'm sorry, can we go back to one thing that I feel like we didn't quite close out?
Okay.
That back on number four or five, the like recruitment. This, I would just like to revisit how we're going to move getting the application form finalized. Whether it's like we should come up with a draft or Anthony and Laura should come up with a draft. Just wanted to like follow up on, on that. So we, we have clarity on how that's going to move, keep moving.
Just to move it forward and get it done quicker. And Laura, correct me if I'm wrong, Laura can go ahead and put that application process together. We can send it out. It just seems easier and quicker. That's why I have her on the call to make sure we're taking all these notes. Sure, we'll try to, we'll formulate an email together, making sure we try to hit all of your important topics. And if you want to, you can just say, hey, this was, please add that.
I mean, like this is just the form, the web form I'm talking about.
She would do that as well.
Okay, could we review that?
Yeah, she would submit it to us for a review.
Can we put a date on that right now?
Laura?
Yeah, if I, I don't have the final questions. So Anthony, why don't you and I get together tomorrow? And we can have something, I'm heading out of town. So we can get it together by end of day Thursday.
And to summarize, what we're looking for is obviously the person's name and address. Which boards that they're interested in, a list of the boards and their priorities. They can list as many of them as they want, but they have to put them in priority. Why they want to serve on the board, is that correct, everyone?
I think, I think Anthony has a list from when we.
And it was, I believe, I believe Councilmember Schmidt said, have you been on any other boards or served on any elected? I'll pull the.
Yeah.
You know, what qualifications do you have? Why do you want to serve on the board, things like that? So I, you know, they'll submit it to us and we'll, we can determine whether it needs any additional information.
And right now, that can be just like a Word document that we're like commenting on, but like not an actual web form and kind of so that we can finalize the, what we want.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. Just wanted to close that up.
Can I ask one question before we move on about, just about sustainability? Is there a particular reason that that was done via a resolution rather than an ordinance? Does anyone know?
I don't know, either one, I mean, as long as it's an official council action, you're just, I mean, you create any, you want, it's still relevant. It doesn't make it less relevant.
The problem is, is that I don't, those aren't online anywhere, are they?
It will be now, Laura is, Laura's putting, Laura put it in for the sustainability commission. Thank you, Laura.
It's currently linked to the resolution. There's a link on the sustainability.
Right, no, and that's, it is, I'm just saying, it's really difficult. Like if someone's going to our municipal code to understand what's in our city, that it's not there, so.
Yeah, I mean.
We can update that.
Right, I mean, that just may make sense to do, I guess.
I think Craig Beasterfeld at the time felt that a resolution was significant legally to form an advisory board. And that's why we did it as a resolution. There's no other reason.
Okay.
But I have no problem, you know, making that an ordinance and being consistent with the other ones. So we were, have we finished our discussion of the responsibilities of the board chair?
I wonder if we could add some, I don't know if it's appropriate to make the board chair the person responsible for making sure a report gets to the council? I don't think that precludes necessarily any other board member addressing the council, but someone should have the responsibility of making sure that report gets to us according to our schedule.
So, you know, would, would you be okay with receiving minutes from the meetings?
Yeah, but I think we've also discussed having a representative come to a council meeting and giving a report in some fashion. And I wasn't sure if it was appropriate to identify the board chair to be that person or empower the board chair to identify someone to do that.
That's, that's actually down further on the list.
I would like to add that to the role of the board chair, that they, they are the liaison and that they organize the, you know, it might be that they organize like two other members to give a presentation or something, but that they are, that's part of the role.
As I said, that, that's down farther on the list. I'd like to.
We're talking about responsibilities of the board chair. So it seems to make sense to discuss it here if we're going to create a comprehensive list.
I saw it as number nine.
We can discuss it again, but I think it's valid to state it here. I'm fine with that too.
So, you know, we have a responsibility, but we don't necessarily have a format or, you know, there's, there's a whole bunch of other things that I want to talk about with regards to, you know, coordinating efforts between, you know, the, the boards and city council, you know, with regards to things like presentations. So we can try and discuss it here, but then we're, we're assuming we know what, what form this interaction is going to take so that we can figure out what role the board chair is going to play in that interaction.
I mean, I'm happy for, to also just say here, your role is to like be the agenda and that you're like the team leader for the board or the commission. And that part of that is to be the liaison to the council and the staff. So that it's clear to, to the chair, to everyone who serves on the board or commission, to everyone who's on staff and to all of council, that if you need to contact like sustainability commission or parks commission, like that's the person you contact. And their information is available to do that. And that they know that they are the, like, they know if they have a question about something, they're the person that needs to go ask that to council or to staff.
Yeah, and we can discuss what the report looks like under number 12 then.
Well, yeah, it's actually past the, you know, I get that as a separate item. Because, anyway, if it's okay, can we, okay, 13 says interaction with council and presentations. So we talked about, you know, so staggering, the length of terms and staggering of terms. Are we okay with the, the length of the terms that are, have already been set up?
I was curious about one of them. It seems like a lot of them are three years, but I noted that in the ordinance, plan and zoning says four years. Is that correct? That planning and zoning is four years?
I understand that that's how long it was. Councilmember Phillips, do you remember if it was four or three when you were on there? I think it's.
I think it was only three.
It's, well, it seems like it has to be four based on the.
If it's any ordinance, that's what it is.
X, yeah, so it says four in the ordinance. The website says three, so we may want to update that. But I was just curious if anyone knew why some are three, that one's four.
I thought in my memory that sustainability was two, which we've already discussed that might need an ordinance that could change that.
Yeah, so in terms of the length of terms, it, Councilmember Schmidt, I don't know that anyone has the answer as to why we would have four years on that particular board when all the other ones are three.
The board of adjustments says five.
The board of adjustments says five.
Yeah.
And the board of adjustments.
Do you want to just make them all three?
Well, the board of adjustment, that's an easy one to answer because they, they meet only occasionally. And it, how many times, Anthony, did they meet this year or within the last year?
If I had to guess, they may meet two, anywhere from two to four times a year is all.
And so.
Doesn't make sense to replace, replace them all the time if you're having two or three or four meetings a year. That's probably why they made the decisions based on, again, whoever crafted the ordinance or resolution of the, or they had some, some thought into it. I don't know that they all need to be the same for those.
Yeah.
I agree with you of making them consistent and having them all be free.
I do too, except for I'm fine with board of adjustment at five if you're, I don't. I do too, except for I'm fine with Board of Adjustment at five if you're, they don't meet often. I mean, I, I don't, but like Civil Service is four too. And, and then the one I mentioned before, Planning and Zoning. So it may, may make.
So, Civil Service could be ten.
Yeah, Civil Service. They, 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 they haven't met in ten years since the last time they met. That's another one where you could increase the term.
You can be a more board member for life on that one.
Well, and I have a problem with that one, actually. Because that's something that decides personnel matters and stuff, which I almost think that it would be helpful to have.
The, the city manager decides it. If there's a dispute between that, then they go to the Civil Service.
I, I understand, but I'm saying the nature of what they, they handle has to do with personnel, correct? Disputes?
Disputes, if there is a dispute.
Right.
That's the point though, there hasn't been disputes.
Well, I just, well, I don't know in any else case, but I would be fine if that one was three. Um, I would not be in favor of making it longer than four.
We could do any terms you guys want. I don't need, again, it's just happens to be whenever they were created. Um, again, it, it really doesn't matter. Um, when a lot of these, if you make it two, three seems to be what the council's terms are. And so, it seems to be pretty, pretty consistent across the board. I mean, I'm not telling you guys obviously what to do, but you're looking for a simple number. Everyone else is three. That seems like the majority. We could just go with three for everybody except, uh, I believe Councilmember Wood or Schmidt mentioned a Board of Adjustment, make it five. It's really up to you. Just tell us what you want and we'll, we'll put it together.
I'm in favor of five for Board of Adjustment, but also with regards to Civil Service, you know, that's the one board where institutional memory is probably the most important. And so changing people out, you know, guarantees that they're, they're not going to have any experience whatsoever, having gone through the process previously.
But, but how to, can you clarify how institutional knowledge is beneficial? What do you mean by that?
The most recent example would be the pension. There was issues with, when we changed that. And the same thing happened with the, we had, we had a pension board years ago where we basically had to reestablish that as well. Where we were trying to pay some of our older members a different, a different rate, basically, because they were paying it at a much higher rate than current members are. That could be an example. Um, they were there to have those initial discussions and we ended up unfortunately losing a couple of those members. Um, one passed away and that was very instrumental in establishing that. It's many years ago, we had that police and fire pension and then we ended up moving all of our employees to loggers. There are some occasions where institutional knowledge is not a bad thing.
Well, I don't think it's necessary.
But, but not necessary, right?
Yeah, it, it's not necessary, but, um.
What were you going to say, Sean?
No, I, it's, it's, it would be okay to have, but it's not necessary. And certainly those people that are on it could be back on it in three years. You know, in terms, it's not like we're saying, you know, you can't serve on it. We're saying, yeah, you, you can serve on a fine. We're just changing the term to three years. Keep things fresh, make sure that.
Yeah.
You know, we're including people that want to be included in that process. So it's not, I, it's not a bad thing. It, it's okay to have them renew every three years. Be, again, because that's a, that's a totally different legal process, but.
So are we saying, um, I'll make sure I, we know what to say. So for our documents for Laura when we put it together, we're saying everything is three with the exception of a Board of Adjustment, which is five. Is that accurate? Whatever? Is that a pretty much general consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
Done.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the staggering of terms, uh, I, I assume that what we want to accomplish in, in staggering terms is to spread out, you know, to have a certain number of, uh, terms, uh, and, you know, uh, every, every year so that we're not replacing a whole board. So if we, if we had three members, it'd be easy, but obviously we don't. So, uh, we typically have in, you know, either five or seven members. And so, uh, you know, we just have to establish a schedule where, uh, you know, where the minimal number of people are going to be replaced, you know, every year.
I, I don't think the ordinance has already do that seemingly. I think.
I think we should look at what months people's terms are expiring, um, as a more detailed staggering. Because if you have four out of your seven members that all expire in the month of June, um, we don't want that. We don't want to, that to be turning over that much in.
So they, I thought they all expired at the end of June. And that if you were appointed.
And that's what she's saying.
It runs.
They do.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
That's not a bad idea.
But you can spread it, I mean, you spread it so that like two are one year or two are the next year and one is the following year.
Well, that's how it is now.
That's the way they're already staggered. They are.
But she's saying like you can have three people ending at the end of June. That way it is now there, that you've three out of seven or three out of nine leaving at the same time. So instead of all being June of a year, being like March, July, November or something, you know?
If they're staggered properly, that shouldn't happen. So for example, if, um, when Councilmember Phillips was elected, I don't, she still had some of her term left on the Planning Commission. So somebody filled in the remainder of that term. So sometimes we'll appoint somebody, they may only, uh, on the board or commission a year. And so, um, not the muddy of the waters, but I mean, if someone's down for a year and they, they don't have any problems, do you guys still want them to go back into the hat again?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I would be okay. I mean, if, I think I would want to sort of. Yeah. I, I like having them all June and going back into the hat. I think that if we're talking about term, let the number of consecutive terms you can serve in a row, um, you know, consider that question you just posed, Anthony, about the person that served one year. How we account for that in the, do they, do they, do you get to have three terms or parts of terms?
Well, I, I would think that it would be appropriate to apply the same rules that we have on council.
Yeah. Yeah. And maybe what you're saying, I, I do think that Sandy raised a good point though. And maybe it's by board which month. Maybe that's what you were saying, by which month applies. Because you do have this situation where you look at it now and there's like twelve people you have to appoint at the end of June, right? On all, across all of the boards. So maybe it makes sense for different boards to have a different end month.
Although I think for, for, um, maximum openness for people, like it's, it might be easier to have a consistent time that like now is the season when appointments are open.
But I think you also run the risk of not getting enough people, A, just not be paying attention during that time, right? I mean, I don't know. I think that's a good idea in.
Is my, and I, I want to make sure, I, I get, I think what you're saying, Council membership is in the past, we used to say you were kind of appointed. But now that we're opening the process, you're concerned, you may not have enough members for everybody. That, so I, yeah, it's really whatever the council wants. I mean, what we could do is we could possibly make it quarterly where you have quarterly appointments and we can try to spare them out that way. So, uh, you know, you don't have one every, every meeting, but at least you could look at a handful at the same time. Because if you guys are going to go through a multiple applications, it, we could, we could look at that. I could look at the way those are written and, and we could try to stagger those. Are we looking quarterly? Does that sound okay to the?
So it would be like these two boards, they're, they're expires in March. These two boards would be June. These two boards would be, you know, like that was.
We can either do it that way or, you know, um, just, it all kind of depends on how many members, you know? If you have one with seven or five, it could vary, but we could basically just try to set up a staggering schedule on a spreadsheet and just figure out the best way to kind of keep the boards fresh. Because I think that's the whole intent of what we're trying to do. But let's go back in the hat to keep fresh ideas. So I think, um, it's, it could be possible you could have someone in October on the Planning Commission up and then somebody again the following June. It's, it's possible. Just depends on how we stagger it. But, um, we can just, with that, and let you guys look at it and see if you're, you're comfortable with it.
We're also, I think we're also trying to have maximum, we're maximum, um, lowering, lowering of hurdles for people to apply and like understanding of the process. Um, and so I, um, I would be interested.
Go ahead.
Um, I mean, like we've had, I mean, probably six people have contact. You know, I've been in contact personally with six people this year who have tried to apply for a board and encountered a difficulty. And I'd be curious, you know, like I'd like to touch base with them and ask like kind of how they would.
Well, but this.
I can do whatever.
Is that, is that, is that, if it's clear when the timing is, then it shouldn't be a problem, right? If the website said these boards end here, because my point is not everybody is ready in May, you know, when, if they're, if they have kids, their kids are just out of school, you know, they may not be ready in May to participate, but come October, they're like, oh, I'm hearing about this. I wanted to do it. And there may be an opportunity for that.
Well, we could also, we could also, to, to reflect on what Councilmember Schmidt said, we could actually put a, a forecast to show people what's coming open.
Right.
Just need to be what's up in three months. It could be what's up in the next, uh, several years if need be. I mean, we could put together a, a rotating schedule where everyone could see. We would just update that, you know, every six months a year and they could see what's ahead and what, what those opportunities are. You know, hey, I might want to be on the park board, but nothing's going to be open for nine months. But I really want to be on the park board, so I'll just wait. But at least you'll know it's coming up in April or June or October.
Yeah. I'll just quickly add that, that, you know, if we do our advertising right, it becomes a non-issue with the staggering. Uh, number two, I heard somebody about limiting terms on, on boards and commissions. And I don't think that's a good idea. I think that should absolutely be, um, subjective only because you might not be able to find somebody. And what you don't want is certain boards not having people. So if somebody serves a few terms and, um, we still can't find anybody to fill that position and they still want to do it and they're doing a good job, there's no reason not to have them, uh, do it. So I'd much rather make that subjective than, uh, make that an ordinance. I don't, I, you know, it's, it's, it's fine for elected officials like us. Completely understand, uh, why they have terminals. But when it comes to board and commissions, we'd serve the councils. Um, it's important to have every voice that you can get on those. I remember being on the council a long time ago and having a huge issue with the amount of absenteeism in some of our councils. And I went to Marty and said, look, you know, I'm, you know, Planning and Zoning, there's four people, there's four people tell me that this is okay. What about the other three people? I mean, should I trust these four people that said that, you know, putting a garage in somebody's backyard is okay? I, I wasn't okay with that. I wanted more than just a quorum. I wanted the majority, you know, like a super majority of people there at least, uh, on some of these boards. So, you don't want to handcuff yourself or future councils by saying that three, three years and you're done. You can't, can't be on the board anymore. So.
And, and I agree with you, Sean, that it's sort of a self policing type of, uh, process because they, you know, if you put everyone back in the hopper and there aren't any other, uh, applicants, then unless there's some reason to remove someone from, uh, their board position, then they could keep on serving. Uh, and if, if someone wanted to serve five terms, that would still be scrutinized by the council and they would be compared to other people that are applying for that position.
That's exactly right. So.
And that's how that council can make a decision.
If we're truly going to engage this process, then I'm comfortable with that because I do think that there are other checks and balances that could prevent. You know, my concern is just was the automatic reappointing without letting anyone else.
That's pretty much gone at this point.
Right. And so I, I, I agree with you that then we're not creating another problem by.
Leave it up to the councils. We're only going to be here for a couple of terms. Not, excuse me, I don't want to handcuff the next one, um, when they can't find anybody to be on a board. And then now they're not going to have all the information that that board was designed to do, to give to you because we can't be experts in everything. So, you know, that's why we have a lot of planning and zoning.
So are we in agreement then, uh, that the term limit issue is, uh, going to be, you know, we're not going to establish a set number of terms that someone has to serve? Or they can't serve?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Then let's, let's move on.
Sorry, could we, I think we have like three and a half minutes before the next meeting. Could we adjourn? And maybe in council communication, we could make a, an action, like our plan for how we're going to keep the conversation going.
That's fine. Uh, yeah, I, I've lost track of time. So, uh.
We'll go ahead and, and end this and I'll start the next meeting in a, in a, in a few minutes or so. Is that okay?
Give me enough time to throw something in my mouth and, uh, then.
See everybody in a few minutes.
Okay.